Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krachek?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape McCanney Herald on January 4th, 2017. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start today's work session with A and F.
Okay. We have, we're not having our meeting until Monday. Lot to discuss. I was working on the agenda today. It's pretty full. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
Okay. At this point, I'll, do you have a CFO report, anything update?
I don't at this point.
All right, then, tax collector?
Hello, everybody. Did everyone get their tax bills?
Yes.
Everyone should have their tax bill by now. It was mailed July 21st. Grace period was extended to August 16th due to the delay in the bills getting out, which was due to the state. Tax sale notices went out. I mailed seven tax sale notices. And one of them's already paid. That's really good news. We're working on month end. Utility bills will go out next week. We're having an influx of direct debits. It's been an awesome response to that. So I anticipate doing the pre-note within the next two weeks. And then in November, your automatic withdrawals for anybody who signed up for it will kick in. And if you signed up for utilities, September's the pre-note, December it kicks in. Okay? That's all I have. And if it's okay, may I go back to my desk? Okay. Owen, I'd like to thank Jill again for allowing me to attend Nan Hanker's Ceremony of Life. It was, she meant a lot to me, and she'll be greatly missed. I thank you for that. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to follow up on the temporary water service and how that, I heard all's going well. How many applications have we had?
Zero.
Zero, okay. So far, so good, then.
So far, so good, yeah. But I expect that activity to begin in the fall.
Yeah.
When we do all our tear, well, tear downs. And then there's a lot of construction in the fall. Lot of the meet, lot of the homes will come off of the demo list. And I believe that that activity will increase then. Anybody else? All right. I'm going to go back to posting taxes.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon. I'm here, just sitting in the back. Quick update on the revow. I spoke to George today, who unfortunately was in a car accident, so he hasn't been in the office in a while. But he told me that inspectors are on their second sweep of the borough, that the interior inspections are about a third of the way done. The preliminary land values are complete. It's kind of scary looking at them. Some are going to go up, some are going to go down, and some are going to stay the same. So that's about it. Just trying to keep up with the volume of deeds, property address changes, just the normal daily wear and tear on my brain.
Why do you say they're scary? Because of people's reactions when they see their changes?
Yeah, because some of them, we have some big sales, and those sales are influencing, you know, one sale doesn't make a market, but when you have two or three, and they're big, it impacts the market. So it's, you know, they seem pretty, you know, on point.
They're not surprising you.
No, but they're scaring me a little bit for your reactions.
What were the three big ones? There was a $10 million one?
Yeah, $10 million one on the beach. There was a five, couple of $5 million ones on the bay.
But the 10 million was a double lot, was it not?
Ten?
It was number one, 110th Street. I'm not sure if that's a double lot, but they didn't, they didn't tear it down. They just, they're just renovating it.
Yeah, we know who it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it was a double lot. So it would average out to five, then.
For the, for the land?
Yeah. I mean, per lot, per average lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Per average lot, if that's the way they do it.
Is it a full 60?
I'm sorry?
Is it a full two 60s? Because a minimum lot size is 60, so it is subdividable?
I don't know.
I can go look and come back, but I don't have that information right off the top.
Because if it's not subdivitable, then that's really, you know, it's a bigger lot, but it's, I don't think you can really extrapolate saying, hey, it's five and five.
It was also a private sale, so we don't really know what, you know.
Yeah.
So, but there were a couple of big bayfront sales. The one, the old one that had a tennis court on it. You have Nerny back on Golden Gate. You have the one next to where the tennis court was that sold for, I think, $5 million. Yeah, so some bayfront are going to get some impact.
Now, you went on the high end. Tell me about the low end, why they would decrease.
Because the land sales aren't there.
Location, location, location.
Yeah, and, you know, if, I did check, like, you know, I just started to really, like, kind of study it. So, you know, I'm seeing, like, the land value on the 200 block go from, like, I think I was looking at one, it was 650, and it went to, like, 700. So there is still a little bit of an increase, but, you know, it's, I'm still, I'm still studying.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Nobody else.
Have a nice day, ladies and gents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Construction zoning?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We're still in a really big construction boom here. It's still going a little, little crazy. We expect the fall to be probably a little busier than last year. From what we see coming in with permits for zoning, especially with the reeds coming in. They just called me, Paul Massing just called me the other day and said that they wanted to do test piles for the new building this week coming up, just to try to get an idea of what it's going to be like for the whole, to finish doing all the pilings. They do that from an engineering point of view to see how deep they have to go. It'll be onsite. It more than likely won't impact anybody streetwise, once they get the machines on the, on the property. So we'll wait to see what happens this week. We just got the footing and foundation permit in for right of review for zoning. We have that in the office right now. So we, I guess we'll...
With regards to that, we had discussed at the last meeting about the 45-day period, but that zoning approval, the resolution, had been dated in 2016. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, but I believe that that would have been from the date of the resolution or the 20 days after. So that's, 45-day period is long gone now for them to start that project.
From the publication?
From the publication, yes. So that's long past. So they can start the pilings. And like Mike said, they're doing test pilings now, which are, what do you say, a half a dozen to 10 pilings to do that?
About that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
They'll do it a bunch of different locations onsite, but they won't do the whole, the whole site as of yet, until they, they realize how deep they have to go or to get the right depth and the right length of the piles.
Okay. And then the only other thing I would have is the Chamber of Commerce had invited me to their last meeting in July to discuss the sign ordinances. And their consensus was that they would like to set up a committee within, in the chamber, and then come to the board or give people to maybe change the ordinance, to allow the freestanding signs, but to come to you with some ideas on how to do that. And on the street, I, I put a letter together and put the sign ordinance as well as the penalties in just a three-page, tried to keep it simple and so that people could understand it. And I went, walked the streets and handed it to all those who had the signs on the streets. And that was just last week. And their consensus was almost the same as the Chamber of Commerce. They, this is, they've only got three months to make the money. We really would like to have this, so I would look forward to that in the future, in the near future, maybe after this season, or that the Chamber of Commerce come into the council people with a, an idea.
That was studied in the planning board three years ago. The sandwich boards and all of that was brought back to council and dropped flat.
Shot down.
Because I know that it had been talked about, you had mentioned, in the off-season.
In the off-season.
Putting the mouth so people can glance from the corner and see who's open, and it doesn't impede pedestrian traffic at all. And it would be advantageous to the businesses for people to be able, at a glance to see.
Good you're doing that, because they do need to be, some people don't have any idea we have ordinances for signs. And other things on the sidewalk, too, that we have ordinances for.
I find it's been negative and positive.
Yeah.
With the, with the business owners on the streets. There's been both reactions and...
And the concept was that if we put, allowed everybody to have sandwich signs on 96th Street, we wouldn't have customers, because they'd be trying to, you know...
In the summertime, I wouldn't think they'd need them, because the street is so full of people.
You know that everybody's open.
And the stores are open. So they know what stores are open, and they can put a sign in their window. But if, I would think they'd need to go back to the planning board if they want...
Off-season, it probably wouldn't be hard, except you'd have to, we tried to conform it so that everybody would have the same size, and it would be off-season and all look nice, so that it was all consistent. And it, it was talked about for a long time, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be revisited again. They're, all the minutes are there from the planning board when it was brought before.
Yeah, I believe I found those, and I found that Joanne had gone to other boroughs and towns and got their sign ordinances. I have that, I found that file.
You're talking about permanence, they're not, they're not asking for permanent signs. They're asking for the sandwich.
Temporary, temporary signs, sandwich signs, yeah.
Most of the requests that I got when I would attend the chamber meetings were from people who are off the beaten path. If they were in the 300 block of 96th Street, if they were down 3rd Avenue and perhaps around the corner, they were the ones who felt that they needed to have some kind of signage on the street so that they could notify people as they walk by. And the north and south end of town, a lady, I went to buy a Diet Coke, and it took me an hour to get it, because she wants to be able to put a sandwich sign out. And so we spent an hour with her trying to explain the whole concept of it. However, I did say to her, I said, "I can't promise you anything. I'm just saying that the ends of town are different than the middle of town." And she finally realized what it would, I said, "Imagine all these signs up and down 96th Street. No one would do any business." And she, so if those areas could be treated a little different, it wouldn't be...
And it's a safety hazard on 96th. It's definitely a safety hazard.
Definitely.
And I agree with the mentor, down at 99th Street by St. Paul's, around the corner is this soap, Blue Eden's there also, but also a soap place. It's very difficult for them to get people, so they have a wayward sign up there right now.
But that's not legal.
No, it's not legal. I'm not saying it's legal.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to emphasize that that, down that part of the town, it's very hard to know where those stores are.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if below 3rd Avenue now on 96th Street, if the fact that the garden club hasn't put in hanging baskets and things to draw your eye down that way, and more stores right on the corner, if that isn't helping people, I'd be interested to hear if their traffic hasn't picked up because of the beautification in that area.
Yeah, the sign you were talking about for the Eden place, that was actually on city property on the corner of 96th, sorry, 3rd and 99th. And I said, "You just can't put it there on store."
That falls over on a lot, on a child?
Right.
It's very attractive, that sign.
It is.
But it's illegal.
But it's illegal.
Are they, are they permitted in the Harbor Square Mall or not?
No.
I wanted to talk to Marcus on that.
So, Joanne, I had many discussions about that, and we both agreed that the ordinance needs to be clarified relative to that issue for that locale.
Because it's private property. They, they told me in the Harbor Square Mall that there was a law, a case, a lawsuit. And I said, "Well, if you could produce that for me so I could..."
Yeah, I have a copy of it in the file. Joanne sent it to me, but I have a copy of it, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So what you're saying is they, we can't govern what goes on on that private property?
There's an argument that that's kind of a different piece.
Because it's private property.
I think zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, with regards to signs or can build in your setbacks, you still, it's what the ordinance is, is how I would read it.
It's, it's not quite as clear when you read the decisions, yeah.
Okay.
Because I was asked that just in the last couple of days. How can, how can the ordinance cover that private property?
Because you're talking about the interior.
The interior of the mall.
Stores are not on the perimeter. There are not signs that are visible from the sidewalk. There are nuances as to enforcing it there, so you have to look at it a little more closely.
It just so happens to be open-air interior.
Right.
Right, but it's still private property.
So it feels public, but it's really not.
Right, so...
Hard, tough to govern that.
All right. And the last thing I have is Jill and I were talking about street opening permits when they cross, across 3rd Avenue, which is County Road. And I do have a call in with Marcus Care, I'm sorry, Dale Foster, to get that interpreted, interpreted from a county standpoint. So, and as soon as I do, I'll...
Well, we've always deferred to them with the permit that they require through the county.
But we paved the street, so does that affect...
Yeah, it was the cross-street where we did the infrastructure.
Yeah.
And they opened it outside of our moratorium.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we would need to get some type of agreement with the county that they would abide by whatever our moratorium says, since we're actually paid for the improvements. So that's something that we'll have to...
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Thanks, Mike.
Planning board report? Charles, do you have anything?
I don't really have anything. I know our planner from Motten Associates will be here, I believe, at today's regular meeting. Just answer any questions, introduce himself to the full council. And I know he, we are meeting tomorrow, and they will be producing a report for several items that were discussed at the most recent meeting. But tomorrow's meeting will entail the long-range plan.
Yeah, because we haven't met since last council meeting. Planning board did not meet.
No.
So the subcommittee is meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Is everybody coming?
Has everyone RSVP'd?
My knowledge, yes.
Yes.
I asked. The answer was yes.
Good.
That would be lovely.
Next would be the engineer's report.
You have to push the, it should be lit up as quick.
There we go, okay. I don't know, in the past, what's your procedure, if you like, all the items read, or if you just have questions on them? However you like to proceed, let, just tell me.
Typically, it was just a highlight of, of anything of significance in the report. Some of it's just every month, so I would just say anything that...
You know, obviously, the, the big item that we have going right now is the resiliency, the Flood Act grant that we have. We did have a meeting with the state this week, and they were very, they're very cordial. They're talking about, I believe, September, that the grant agreement has to be, has to be signed by. And then they will have a, the grant agreement will read that everything has to be done by 19, correct? It'll be two years from that point. However, they have said that all the grant agreements will be extended. So they want to make sure that everything's done properly. We've dealt with the people frequently. We're doing this in Wildwood also, have done it in other communities. And Ryan is with us today, because Ryan actually did the grant application. He did all the conceptual design drawings, and he has a tremendous understanding of this, as well as a pretty good institutional knowledge of Stone Harbor, because he's done quite a few projects here. A lot of stuff that would come into the office then would be handed to Ryan for the actual design. So I feel very comfortable with this program, that we're going, everything will go fine, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem. We're working through any little questions they have. And I don't know, Ryan, if you want to comment on anything, or did I cover it, or...
Other than the projected construction schedule, they envision us beginning construction in the fall of 2018, two, two seasonal constructions we can stop for in the summer of 19.
So that's where you're saying the extension from the fall of 2019 would go into the spring of 2020?
Correct.
Yeah, federal regulations require to continue your next year grant agreement. The DPP is already anticipating, the NRS are already working on the extension. But the initial paperwork that they'll present to you to be approved in September cannot reflect longer than that to your schedule, because that's what's required by federal law. So, once you get that, and it will reflect, then, then it's suitable to talk about that at the last round.
So this is a big change from the previous deadline. It was my understanding, and I'm happy that it is that way, but it was my understanding from previous information that this money had to be spent by June of next year.
I thought it was quicker, too. Was it quicker, Jill, ever?
I thought we had an...
No, I think, I think it was in...
Expansion, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was always by 2019.
Okay.
Yeah, it always was, because we tied it in with the police building.
Yeah.
And we, after we had our meeting here, we then went to Wildwood for a meeting on a similar, on the same program for a similar project, and they reiterated everything, that the grant will be, she said, "I can't give you anything in writing right now, but it's already been agreed that the grant is going to be extended." And they, they laid out the same schedules.
So nothing will start till 2018, the fall of 2018? Is that what you said, the fall of 2018?
19 to spring of 20.
No, to start.
Oh. We have to finish the sewer pump station improvements first, and then...
Exactly. Okay, so this is not the $2.7 million?
Yes.
It is the $2.7 million.
This is a different grant.
Yes.
And I, someone just mentioned the police building, too? That the police building's not part of the $2...
No.
Oh, yeah, right. So that's a separate...
That's a whole different grant.
Yeah.
Don't get nervous, girl.
And that is, the work on that is progressing. Ray Robertson, our office, has been spearheading that. I believe he forwarded some information. We're, we're going back and forth on what we're doing with the fuel source for the generator. So we forwarded some info, information, you have to excuse me, to your code official, because they need to give us a, or he needs to give us his interpretation of the, of the code. We're, what we're attempting to do is go natural gas, be extremely, I don't know, extremely costly, but it'd be more costly to have to go to diesel because of the structure, as well as the fuel conveying mechanism. I don't know if any, if it was in the press down here, it was in the Alena County edition today, about the gas company has been doing all these upgrades to ensure that there are no interruptions during a natural catastrophe. And the gas company has given us their, and they're going to give this to us in writing, given us their word that they will not be cutting the, unless it's a catastrophic event that the island's under four feet of water or something, God forbid, they would not be interrupting service. So that comes into play. In addition, like I said, there's this NFPA regulation that the code official has to look at. But we, we would like to do the gas. I believe this, I believe Stone Harbor wants to do gas, and that's the avenue that we're proceeding down.
That's what we have now, right?
Yeah, I can...
We're hooked to natural gas now, right?
We are, yeah. I did speak to Ray today, and it's just a matter of clarification, clarification on the wording with that. So we'll have Ray, and Ray will talk and make it work.
Yes. Well, is, is...
It's also a flood issue, and we have to make sure that it's above the 500-year limit.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
500-year flood.
500-year flood.
Yeah.
Is, Ray is, is presenting at the next meeting, is that correct?
Correct. Ray Roberts. Yeah, Ray Roberts.
Right, on the police building.
He is, he will present the police building and also on the flood mitigation plan at our next council meeting.
Okay, but the police building is still, as far as you guys, still on track?
Yeah, they're meeting, I believe he's meeting with the police committee this week.
Yeah, I just talked to Ray on my way here. Everything is still on track. I think it's just a couple, you know, outstanding decisions that need to be made, and we're ready to go out the bid on that.
And I think maybe it's the grant that we got confused on is the grant that coincides with the police building in the 100 block of 95th Street that was time-sensitive, but we were able to get an extension, correct?
Not the flood mitigation grant. Two different grants.
Right, that's the one, I think. That's the one was time-sensitive, I can remember, that we had to spend the money by June of next year. But we got an extension.
Correct.
What else?
And, let's see. They are the hot items I'm aware of. We did have a look at the list. I know there's discussion also, I don't know if that is going to take place tonight or, or at a committee meeting and all, on the street opening ordinance and then the bulkhead ordinance.
The street openings on, for, for discussion today. And the, what was the other one? The bulkhead, that'll come back. The bulkhead height's coming back.
Okay. Because I, I've done quite a bit of research for other shore communities on bulkhead, on bayfront bulkhead elevations, so I can lend, you know, my expertise on that.
Yeah, that, that should be part of the discussion at the August 15th meeting, so...
I'd like to ask you a question on the reconstruction of Golden Gate Road. It says it'll return in the fall to replace sewer laterals and complete the asphalt service course. That's supposed to be milled and paved. That's not just going to remain asphalt.
I'm sure if the plans are, and I don't have the plans handy, but if it's a... I believe you're...
It was milled and paved.
Right, right.
And so therefore, to install the sewer laterals, you're going to dig up the, the surface that's there now?
Right.
And then replace it, mill and pave.
Correct.
And what part of the fall are you speaking of?
We, we actually are trying to schedule a meeting with Lambert sometime this week to meet out on the site, go over everything, and at that point, we can discuss scheduling and get you a specific timeframe. So we're going to meet with the contractor and get that lined up.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, any other ones you want to comment on? No, the only other open item I see on the report here is the borough did receive some funding for 2017 state aid. It looks like we submitted a proposal in June. I don't think we've been authorized yet, so we haven't started work on that yet. But we're ready to go as soon as you're ready to go on that project.
Which one, which project?
This is 95th Street, from the Bay to 2nd Avenue.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check that, because you should have gotten that one.
Because that one, that we got the two grants, and they're supposed to be working together
on that, so...
Great.
Why are they replacing?
We have to start looking at next year's. I think the letters just came out. Correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Applications.
The, we have to consider what, what application we would like to do next year, so... They, the letters just came out, I'm sure they, they've been received here, so just start to think about that. They, the letters just came out, I'm sure they, they've been received here, so just start to think about that.
Grant, I'll have to get together.
Can we go back to Golden Gate just for a minute, because I might not have heard it right? Why are we replacing the sewer laterals? I thought we did all that on that project.
We actually went out, I, I believe we went out and we video inspected some of the laterals, and there was some issues that we found with some of the laterals that needed to be addressed, and so that's, that's what the contractor did.
Yeah, these, they're items that are on the punch list.
Right.
Should've been done but weren't done correctly, so.
So who bears the cost for that?
Pardon me?
Who bears the cost for that?
There's no additional cost.
No, it was in the contract.
There'll be no additional cost.
It was in the contract, yep.
A lot of them?
How many?
I, I don't have the list in front of me.
Yeah, I don't know how many.
I don't, I don't think it was many.
I saw the one that was dug up, all the way down at the end.
Right.
I do wanna compliment you on giving each of us a, an engineering status report. I think that's...
Good to see.
I think it's a good thing.
And then the only other question I would have is the bikeway initiative, that I guess there's really nothing concrete and when the county plans on doing anything.
I, I don't have anything concrete, but I will follow up and I'll let you know.
Okay.
But we only authorize bike racks and...
It was limited, yeah, and they're gonna be re, and they're striping the lanes.
And they're striping other lanes.
Right.
But not additional off streets in it.
No, just some racks and I think one, one fixed station down at the rec building.
Are we, the 93rd Street sanitary sewer pump replacement, are we on target with that? What's happening there?
Yes, we, we have done some survey on that. We've got the treatment works permit, application process ongoing. We did our geotechnical work, and as we get further along in the design, and that's when we'll be coming back to you for some input and feedback on that project, but that project is moving as scheduled.
Okay.
No problem.
You have anything more for engineers?
Fees collected for the month of July in the construction office, forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. And fees collected for the clerk's office for the month of July, forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight and twenty cents.
That concludes A and F.
Anything from CFO?
No.
Well, weigh in with anything, Jim? Thank you. Anybody have anything else for A and F? We'll move on to Public Works. Joan?
I guess I'll start, or, or do you want to start, Grant, and then I'll fill in?
CFO needs a scanner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Get myself situated here. Everybody got their report for the month?
Yep.
Did everybody read the report for the month?
Yes.
Yes, Grant.
We used over a million gallons more water than we did the previous month of the last year, the same month of the last year.
Still a little over, um...
Not quite a million.
Half a million.
A little over, close to.
It was actually, uh, zero point six seven four nine, because I checked it.
What?
I checked it.
Zero six seven four nine.
Zero point six seven four nine, million gallon.
It was over 700,000 gallons.
Almost 700,000 gallons, more than we did last year.
Right. With all the rain.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yes. We've had numerous calls over the last couple of the days of people worried that they may have a leak on their properties, but it's not leaks on the property, especially down the bay ends. When they developed Stone Harbor, they filled in a lot of creeks and riverbeds, and those, those riverbeds still exist today. And 92nd Street, 94th Street, down near the bay, there are areas where there's a lot of groundwater, and they're panicking right now because they think that there's a leak, a major leak. There isn't. So we're dealing with that right now. Speaking of all the water, this, this weekend's storm caused heavier than usual wastewater flows than normal due to the flooding events. Our two lift stations, and Carrie, I'll give the, these numbers. All five pumps ran for a total of 124 hours over the, the period of the storm. Most of that time was during Saturday's flooding event. That was not because of our issues, that's because of issues in towns north of us, on the barrier islands. They're not as sealed as we are. That's why we have the ordinance for vent caps to be sealed, and when we design our infrastructure, then make sure that, that all of our sewer lift, our sewer manholes have caps in them. So I got numerous phone calls from county MUA from Crest Haven plant, saying that they were overloaded. Crest Haven only handles eight million gallons of wastewater at, at a time. They were up at 16 million gallons at one point during Saturdays. So they called me and said that we're backing off at, at the 81st Street plant, and what happens is 93rd Street Lift Station takes all the waste from the south end of town, brings it to that lift station, raises it up and then pushes it, force mains it down to 81st Street, where the county picks it up. Well, the county was so overloaded that they requested us to back off and allow our, our wet wells to fill up a little bit more than normal. Well, that's why we, we pumped for 124 hours. That was, that was a total of the five pumps that we have in service, and yes, we need to upgrade. Because the, the system is old, especially that building, those pumps, that wet well is old, and it's not gonna be able to keep up as the construction increases and our water use increases. Let's see, let's move on. I, I did the inspection of all of our, our bay ends and outfalls. All the duct bills are in place and functioning properly. I gave a couple of issues to the construction office about some of the bulkheads along, that marry up to our bulkheads on the, on the bay ends that are of concern, that need to be replaced or at least maintenance. So hopefully Michael can take care of that. I have a letter here for, that we'd like to have you review. It has the 50% recycling that the state DEP is, is forcing on us, and I would like to distribute that to all the resident, or the restaurants and shop owners in town first, and then, and as, as well as the real estate agents, and to get the word out that we need to do a little bit more conscientious recycling and separation of our trash and our bulk. We did have an increase in our bulk and our, and our, um, our, our recycling went down, our bulk, our solid waste went down, but our bulk went up. A lot of that is because, and Jill has a picture, and I believe you have it on your desk, of all the debris that we take off the beach, that goes into our bulk waste and, and is taken out to the MUA as bulk. It's not recyclable, because we don't have the, we can't take the chairs apart and take the aluminum and separate it. So it goes into our bulk containers, and also from our rehabilitation of our crossovers. That's why those numbers were up.
Can we do a yard sale with any of these things you bring off?
Can we forbid people to leave them?
I wouldn't mind having a scrapper come in and take it from us.
Yeah.
Because what they do is they take it and they, they'll take it to the...
And they'll borrow it down.
Yeah, and they'll tear it down and separate the aluminum and the, and the metals from the, from the fa- fabrics and whatnot, so.
What do we have to do?
It's something we can talk.
Yeah, what do we have to do?
What do we have to do to have them come, the scrapper?
You'd have to do agreements, an RFP, or, or put it out for bid.
We can discuss that. We have a meeting in the beginning of September.
What they can do is that, there are, there are scrap companies that are, that are out there that'll bring in their own dumpster. Just throw the material in the dumpster, and every so many weeks they'll come in and pick it up.
Put them in front of your house, they'll come get them?
And they stand to make the money. We don't have to pay them to come in. They would just set up to take it because then they will, then they would dispose of it.
Just put it on the curb.
We, we can, we can set it up where we want, we want their tonnage numbers, on how much they, they take to the, or sell off, so that we can get credit for that.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah.
Instead of it going into the solid waste stream, it's going into the recycling stream.
Can we do it through gov, gov deals?
No.
Why not?
Why? Because then we would have to, we would have to have a facility to hold the bulk. If you, if you put it out to bid and they bring in their own, their, their own dumpsters, then they come and take it when, when it's full. We just call them up and tell them it's full, come get it. If we were to gov deal, we would have to put it out to auction
Right.
every two, three months.
But it's storage.
Once a month.
Are you...
We can talk about that in Public Works.
And are you getting that, e- e- every day, every week, every day?
Every day.
Every day you're getting that much?
That's just one load.
I was gonna say, yeah.
It's every day.
You get a load of...
Were loads of that a day?
No, five. We do five trips.
At least five of those like that, every day.
Every day, all summer.
But I'll follow up on that when, you know, when I do my report.
There's gotta be somebody who's interested in breaking that down and...
Sure.
There has to be, if you have that.
Because they'll pick them up on cleanup week. When we do, when we are allowed to put them out on cleanup weeks, those things disappear.
Yeah, they do.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so there has to be somebody that likes them. Just gotta find the people.
Yes.
That's incredible.
So, uh, just one other thing. Solid Waste has begun evening pickups of trash on the beach on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as a pilot program, and so far so good. I haven't had any complaints. I don't know if any...
I came off the beach on Sunday at 5:00, and it was great. Not a piece of trash on the sand there, nothing at all. It looked great. And I thought, hmm, what has Grant done?
Along with Craig and...
Because I, no, to- I noticed it immediately, noticed it immediately, so.
I'll tell you about that too.
Yes, good work.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, July...
She didn't mean you, Grant.
On July 20th, along with myself and Karen Lane, Grant Russ, Craig Reeves, and Lisa from Public Works, Cressy, we attended a meeting of the county MUA and representatives from the DEP. Every town in Cape Mount, Cape May County was represented by one or more participants. The DEP was primarily there to obtain information from us on how best we were letting our communities know how to recycle and how best to improve upon what we were already doing. It was our successes and our issues. So in order to be in, and Grant talked about this, in order to be in the best position possible to obtain grant money, each community has a goal of 50%. Stone Harbor now is at 41.47. The only communities exceeding or meeting the 50% are lower township and upper township, and that's because their population far exceeds our town and the smaller communities. Avalon's a little ahead of us, but not much. So we presented to the director the DPR hang tag that is being distributed to each household in Stone Harbor. They in the county thought that the idea was very impressive. So thank you to PW for coming up with a tag idea. These have now been distributed from 80th to 90th, 99th Street, without the circle, and Public Works is continuing to see that each household receives this tag. It's very informative. It tells you what not to recycle, who to call on just a small hang tag, if they read it. Somebody already looked at it and said to me, "Oh, I know the schedule," and threw it away. I went, "Oh, no." But anyway, um, so I suggested that someone associated with the, with and knowledgeable, this is to the DEP and the C, the county MUA, that about recycling could possibly visit their, either the garden club, the civic club, the seniors, the American Legion, and take these to them and specifically go over it so that they understand. I would like to consider us putting a sign in the kiosk that says something like, "Don't take a vacation from recycling," because it's a lot of the vacationers here that don't bother to recycle because they feel they pay a lot for the place and, oh, well, they'll do what they wanna do. And maybe we could think about sponsoring a poster contest from the children in school about recycling. We had a discussion, a very in-depth discussion in reference to what is and what isn't recyclable. And I think most people were taken back by some items that are not recyclable, such as egg cart, cartons, cardboard ones are not recyclable because food touches them. Of course, the plastic shopping bags was a huge item, huge. The ones you take your food home from the Acme are not recyclable. So if you take your recyclables, put them in that bag, tie it up, and throw it in the recycle can, Public Works has to take it out and put it in the trash. We're not allowed to open it because there's been knives in there. It's contaminated, so your recyclables have to be loose in the can. Pete's boxes, you'll be surprised, may be recycled if you clean them. They cannot have any food on them.
Take the top half.
You can take the top half if there's no cheese on it, or the flaps, and put that in.
And not the bottom.
But again, everything recyclable should be loose and not put in the plastic bag. So they're trying to figure out how to address that, because that's the most important issue. And as Grant had said, it's important for our businesses that hire outside contractors to pick up their cardboard to report their tonnage to our Public Works department, to Lisa. So I did call one of the businesses, and they said, "Absolutely." They, they weren't, they didn't know that they were supposed to do that, so to make sure they're in compliance, because that will help us get the grant money. I think everybody, Grant, can agree that it was an informative meeting, and Karen too, that we all need to make an effort to promote recycling, more than what we have. So we'd like to carry that forward. The second thing I wa- do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions on the recycle? On the next one, excuse me for a minute. It's about trash on the beach. So on Thursday, July 27th, myself, Jill, Grant, Craig, and Jim Crafts met to discuss the problem of trash on the beach, and Karen had sent an email saying some of her items that she thought.
I was asking.
So we tried to come up with, before you asked questions, I think we answered most of them, but maybe not, brought up where what beaches are most effective? 83rd, 88th, 95th, 96th, 103, 108, and 122. On the weekends, the entire beach. That's during the week. We have additional cans at 95th Street, which we put into place, three sets. On 111th, we have two sets, 101st, two sets. We cannot provide any larger cans. They are too heavy for the men to lift, and according to their contract, we don't wanna have any back problems. At present, our cans are 30 or 32 gallons? 32. We do have cans at the street ends, at the promenade, which is 80th to 83rd, one at 88th Street, two sets at 95th, two at 111th, and four at 122nd Street. Right now, we are down two seasonal part-time employees for Public Works. So please understand and give kudos to Public Works. They are doing a tremendous job even being understaffed. We posted a notice on the Public Works Board to seek any Public Works employee. They have to have a driver's license, so that's important, to apply. They are hired by senior already. It's offered first to the TNR crew, then to full-time employees per our contract. We will rotate the employees according to how many are accepted. We started trash pickup on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday with volunteers from our solid waste department. Its starting time is 5:00 and continues until all the trash is removed. Normally, it's three hours, but on Sunday, the crew said the cans were mostly filled but not overflowing, like you said, Judy. There was only one trip needed down the beach. We will be picking up trash at 5:00 each evening in addition to the already scheduled trash pickup. It was decided to do that because the lifeguards have left and most people have gone home for that timeframe. We cannot purchase a larger Jeep vehicle, even though you have that picture. Did you guys see this picture? Where it had a flat tire because of the overload that was in it. The weight of it plunged into the sand and it got a flat tire. So we would like to encourage somehow, come up with some ideas, people to take the trash with them. I spoke to the Reeves, and they have people on the beach taking their people there, and they said, "Absolutely, they will instruct their people to take their trash home with them." So that will be eliminated. If we can tell more people, please take your trash home. We'll be putting additional money in the budget next year, looking at this pilot project to see how effective it is, and tweaking where necessary. So that's the end of that report, and if you have questions, Grant.
So are you saying the second pickup is Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes.
And you're saying that that, during the week, the need isn't there?
Not as, so far, but because we're shorthanded with employees, it's almost difficult to do all week right now.
Right.
But for next year, as we plan ahead, if, if all council feels it's a viable thing to do on a seven-day-a-week, maybe not in June, but maybe July and August.
Right, but just July and August, correct.
Maybe July and August.
Right, so it'll be like an eight-week period.
And then not, you know, so, but we can...
No, the difference was astounding. It really was.
Yeah.
Looked good.
And it's great, so we're happy if you're happy.
Go ahead.
When, when is the normal pickup, Grant, on Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? You're still doing that, right? You're doing that, and then you're doing, yeah?
Yeah.
For the beach?
Yeah.
It, they come in at 4:00 in the morning. You do the commercial cans in town, and then they go to the beach as the sun comes up.
They get to the beach about 6:00.
Yeah.
And then you have additional cans you put out, right?
Yes.
We did.
See, okay.
We had an issue with, it was, it was part of our, our...
Grant?
No, it was, it was, it was part of our, um...
Itinerary? What?
We couldn't get the can, we couldn't order the cans until after the budget was passed. The budget's passed in April. They couldn't get us the racks for the cans until last week because we didn't have the money in place, so.
Would it be advantageous to pick up the trash like at noon or 12? Would it be advantageous to pick up the trash, like at noon or 12:00, and then at 5:00, then you wouldn't have to do it at 4:00?
The problem with that is the tide. If there's a lot of people on the beach and the high tide is at 12:00, then I can't get, I can't get anything down the beach.
Yeah, I don't think you'd want to wreck it.
And I don't think people want to see that, really.
The only thing I'm thinking, if you empty them at 5:00, what's there to be picked up at 4:00 in the morning?
Oh, trust me.
You'd be surprised.
There is?
Really? Household trash.
All those broken beach chairs and tents and whatnot, we don't pick them up-
In those times.
At 5:00, we pick them up in the morning.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Utilities?
The discussion that we had was on the street openings. Last time on that, we left it at the years. I think everything else, council was pretty much in favor of the suggestions that were brought forward. And so, according to my records, the, I think there's three different places, we had recommended going to the seven years, and I know that some council had asked for it to be at 10, so I think we just have to bring that back up here for discussion for council to come up with. A final on that. The engineers are prepared to give their opinion on that. I know Mark has his opinion. I, I still feel comfortable with the seven years. I am a little concerned going to the 10. I'd like to see us go with the seven, see if we have any issues. With all the improvements, I don't think you're going to have any issues with it, but I don't know if the engineers have any-
Most of the ordinances that we deal with are all by your moratorium, so I think going up to the seven years is absolutely going to give you guys some extra protection there so that if something does happen, they come in, they rip your road up, and give you that, you know, the requirement to come in and do an enhanced repair of your road. Obviously, that was part of the back report previously, but, you know, when I saw the seven years, I felt that that was-
Reasonable.
Well-
You do know that what we're doing now, you probably can explain it better because-
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
What we're doing now, and we've done for two years now, right? Help me. That when we're taking our streets up, we're putting everything in the streets that we need for the future.
Right.
So, I'm the one that said 10 years because if you ride around this town, I'd love to have a contest to, you tell me how old that street is. We don't get the high traffic, we don't get the beat-up traffic, we don't get, we don't get the traffic that would take a street to the point of repair in driving back and forth on it. So, go ahead, Karen.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
I think I am for this moment, just for this moment. I'm not going to give up.
I was just anxious to jump in for two reasons. First, I have a report from your company that said in the last two years, none of our moratorium streets have needed an emergency opening. Second to that, Go Green had our meeting, and the first up in our meeting was representatives from South Jersey Gas. And they said basically what you said, they're doing all their major work now, so it would have to be catastrophic for them to have to open the street. So, I mentioned to them, we were thinking of a 10-year moratorium, and they were very comfortable with that because they felt if we're doing all the infrastructure, and they're doing all this now with their gas mains, for what reason would you really have to open up the street? What is your emergency? So, they, they were comfortable with that.
When we met with South Jersey Gas, Jill and I, we got the exact opposite response.
It was the opposite.
The exact opposite.
It was.
Well, you heard him.
I know. And it was just, and it was basically the same people in the room.
The same-
Was it really? Oh, no, we got, because like I've said, every time we mentioned the 10 years, we would get this face, and we got, and then they'd call somebody else over and say, "Tell him," and they go-
Right.
But, but basically, it's, it's only-
So, that's kind of interesting that they came and said something completely different.
They said exactly, they did not see a problem with it because they will have done all their work, and, and we have our report from our engineers that say we haven't had an issue, and if all the infrastructure is there, why would you need to open it? And to Mark's knowledge, we've, we don't have a problem with rogue contractors opening our street in Stone Harbor.
Where you can run into some issues is, and I hear a lot of conversation about a lot of construction going on, is sometimes if you need a new service for some reason, if it's a new connection or an upgraded connection for whatever new construction's going on in town, you pass that burden on to the user. So, it could be a resident, it could be a business that would then be required to do the enhanced paving if they need to come in and do a service at some point in the next 10 years or something like that. So, that's, that's when you, you know, you, when you think about it, you think it's a big utility company, they've come in, they've redid all their mains, everything should be good to go, but it's when you have that resident or business that comes in that may need a new service.
But if the infrastructure's there, that they can just go into the conduit, is that still a problem? We're only thinking of it where the infrastructure has been upgraded.
Understood.
We only have two years of roads that this is going to affect, the 10 years. The, the ones that were done last year and this year are ready for an old house to go down, and everything's there, ready for a new house to go up. It's the ones in the past we're not talking about. You can't take it now and tell everybody that it's going to be 10 years from, you know, we can't do that. We're just talking about, we've got two years under our belt of new streets, new infrastructure, everything under it, and to be able to protect them except for an emergency, they can still dig it up for an emergency. We're on the roll to try to move to the future so that our streets don't look, the money that we spend, and you go down some of the streets that are five, six years old that are dug up and have been patched to heck by the gas company, which I know they needed to do it, but there's money that we've all spent to try to make it the way it is. And I think that, I think people are missing it, that we're talking about two years of streets for 10 years, not the whole town. We can't do the whole town because the whole town doesn't have everything in it.
Yeah, doesn't have the new infrastructure.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I do understand your point.
Specifying the two streets, is that where you're going?
Well, the ones that are already done, your street's done, your street is ready for all the houses to go down and stuff can go underground, they don't have to dig up the street.
Yeah.
And whatever was done in the other ends of town, yours-
It wouldn't just be for those two streets, it would be anything moving forward.
Right, anything that has the infrastructure. If it could be worded that anything where the infrastructure is upgraded, that the street and the gas company has finished their work, that they don't have to tear up the street for anything other than an emergency. It has to be put into legalese.
What, do you have a question, Bonnie?
When the gas, the gas company is redoing all the-
Can you just come up so it could, then Carrie will have you recorded.
Then we'll be able to hear you better.
Bernadette Parsick, do I have to say my name? 9925 Sunset. When the gas company is doing the streets, they're renewing the main, and then they're renewing the laterals, but if there's a house that has no gas, are they putting connections of the laterals to all the properties, or they're just replacing?
I do not know the answer.
They can't, yeah, they can't do that.
No, they can't do that.
Yeah. They can't, they can't. The electric company can, but with gas, you can't, you can't.
So, so then-
Not for gas, no. We're talking about-
So, in that case, if someone wanted to tear down a house that's all electric, they can't get gas?
They wouldn't be able to open up the street to put in gas?
It's not necessarily-
Well, hasn't, didn't the gas company say, and I know they did it in front of our house, most of the lines they're putting in are actually in the walkways?
The majority of the work probably could be done on the opposite side of the curb, but there may be, there may be times, this is one of the downfalls that you have to consider when you're going to pick your ultimate years, there may be times where that, that could affect somebody.
And that would not be considered an emergency, so they just simply couldn't have-
The other thing with Atlantic Electric, and this is the only reason why I'm not recommending going to the 10, because, yes, we've asked them to look at our improvements and to lay out where they think the laterals could be. What if they make a mistake? What if they haven't run one, and you have a homeowner? That could potentially affect those, so.
It does seem that the seven years is a pretty good happy medium, and we did, we decided on the seven at one point.
I, I've ran, run in personally to that situation, and I think it was on a project we were approaching on 110th Street, and the gas company, there was no electric to the, to the property, and there was a moratorium on 110th that may still be in place, but they were, after looking at their infrastructure, were able to tap off beyond the curb line, the neighbor's service line to get to that particular property. So, in that instance, it wouldn't have been a problem, but that's not every, that's not every home, so it could, it could crop up.
Right, hopefully, most of the times that will occur.
It could crop up.
The other, the other thing that today, we just got an inquiry from a resident that wanted to verify if that street was on moratorium because they were looking to, to move all of their electric underground. So, as we're encouraging properties to go underground, and we, we just recently had on 93rd where the, they all got together and they're going to be putting all those under, it could affect something like that. It could delay if a street wants to do that and they happen to be under moratorium, it may affect-
But if the conduit's there, if the infrastructure's there?
No, 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 not moving, moving all of the, the poles and everything that they have that are up now, that wouldn't necessarily go into the new extensions of conduit they're putting in. So, I'm just throwing out all your possibilities just so that, before you make your decision, you know all the pitfalls.
If they put all the telephone poles underground and they get together collectively, there might be, or probably will be disruption of the, the street paving to accomplish that. So, essentially, you're putting a seven-year to 10-year or 10-year moratorium on, people organizing to put their poles underground. Do we really want to discourage that?
The one thing to keep in mind, whether it's seven years, five years, or 10 years, is your ordinance does include a process for an individual to come in and appeal to you to, on a case-by-case basis, a hardship condition. So, you don't have to try to make the perfect ordinance because you're going to have these situations that are going to come up where they may write a letter, whatever the process is, and explain their situation, and you may think it's, it's an exception to the ordinance, and you'll, you'll come up with whatever conditions you want to set for that particular opening. So, there is a mechanism to deal with kind of these isolated things that could happen.
But there's guarantee that that would be resolved.
No, not necessarily.
Anybody can come in and apply for hardship, but I know a lot of people that they have said no to.
Because I thought that we were told we've never allowed a hardship. We've only, the emergencies, there's never allowed a hardship.
Yeah, because actually, it was the only hardship since I've been here that you've done is the, is the opposite because we do have an ordinance that requires any new service to actually go underground.
Right.
And the individuals wanted, wanted to do it, but it was on a street that was in moratorium, so you allowed the hardship to allow them to temporarily connect above, and then once the road moratorium was over, and that just actually occurred this year, and then they did go underground.
That was on 96th Street.
Right.
No, 97th.
97th Street.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one that I'm aware of, and it was, like I said, it was the opposite.
But to our engineer's point, there is a process, and I personally would be inclined, if a street comes in here and says, "Hey, we want to put all of our, we're paying the freight to Atlantic City Electric to take all of our poles, put them underground, and by the way, we're going to, we're going to need to-"
Open a street.
And essentially, you'll have everyone on, it's their street that they're using primarily in front of their houses. If they don't mind it being torn up, I think I'd be inclined to, right?
Get the same process with the gas company. They came in, they did all this, this work, they have to mill, and they pay for the entire street. The gas companies, the electric companies, they do the same, they require the whole area to be covered.
But not, it depends on the, the footage because the gas, there's areas where the gas company just did the strip, they didn't do the whole street. That's the problem.
Yeah, and, and to put the stipulation in to use the process, that will not show.
The infrared, right, that's in, that's in the ordinance. Marked, I don't know if Mark has any input.
Yeah, what?
He's been silent over there.
Yeah.
So, I think that if we're going to proceed, going to a 40 percent increase is probably more prudent than 100 percent increase, and give it time to work out because there are going to be a number of situations that you are not going to foresee as you sit here that are going to warrant an invasion of the street, and we've been pretty rigid in granting hardship allowances. So, my advice would be, and I understand the concern to want to make it longer and to preserve these, and I think that they're all good arguments, I would proceed incrementally and say, "Let's split the baby, do a seven percent, a seven-year moratorium, and then see how that unfolds."
Engineers, you, would you?
Makes, yeah, I mean, it's more of a policy decision, but that makes sense to me.
I feel comfortable with seven.
You go.
Sorry.
Would, do we, well, we could if we've, I don't know what the consensus is. I haven't heard from Mentor or Ray can pretty much see where everybody else is.
I'd look to-
We talked about it the last time, and I-
And you'd go 10?
I agree on the seven.
Right, this, we had, right, and we were going to move forward on the seven, and then it came back up again for 10. So, you think we have the consensus on the seven to bring it forward?
At least we'll make some progress.
Okay.
I think, I think seven is fine. I, I don't, one of the things that, in the proposed ordinance, that maybe I misunderstood it, but I think it's a $1,000 fine if somebody opens the street declaring an emergency, and our engineers say, "No, that really wasn't an emergency," then you're subject to a $1,000 fine for doing that. So, I, I mean, I think if, I think if there's people that are going to do this, they're going to do this for, you know, $1,000 is not going to stop them, you know, so.
True. Well, they'd have to go for-
We could increase.
Seven years.
The draft ordinance has $1,000 for your, the first offense, $5,000 for the second, and $10,000 for the third. You could increase it. I mean, you could go with $5,000 on your first if you really wanted to be aggressive.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is on that. I think if there's somebody who wants to open the street, they're going to do it.
They're going to do it.
It's only going to cost them $1,000, you know? And we didn't, you know, we didn't, the engineers gave us a report, was six weeks ago or so, on street openings in 2016 and-
15 and 16, up to now, to 17, yeah.
And, and, you know, I, there, there really weren't that many. I was surprised that, I, I expected to see a lot more, so I think-
And it was all the gas company?
Well, yeah.
Every one of them was the gas company.
Right, right. I, I agree with, with the solicitor. We should, we'll try seven and see how that works out. Seems a prudent thing to do.
And you can even view it as kind of a pilot program, and if seven isn't bad, push the envelope up a little more. But I, I would caution against leaping that radically.
So, this two, two years of streets that we have put in, if we, they are at five now, can we legally put them at seven?
You, you mean, can you retroactively?
Yes, yes. Can we make sure that now that they're brand-new?
Well, yeah, because the-
It would be seven instead of five.
Yeah, I think that that's not an issue. I mean, if you want to move it-
Does that have to be written into the ordinance?
Yeah, we would rather do that.
So, we can do the two?
The future openings, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Compromise. I still like 10.
So, you know what you're doing and what you're bringing forward to the next meeting?
Yes, we'll bring that forward.
Okay.
What about the, the penalties? Are you interested in, in raising?
What were they, $1,000, $5,000?
Why don't we make it $5,000?
I think one seems awfully, that seems like, that'll be used as the cost of doing business.
Yeah. And I think you have to say not less than because otherwise, the judge has discretion. We found that out with the sprinkler ordinance, and somebody was getting $25 fine.
Well, this is very specific. It says, $1,000 for your first, $5 for your second, and $10 for your third.
We'll make it 5, 10, and 15.
5, 10, 15.
5, 10, and 15.
I'll stop bugging you for 10.
They'll know we're serious.
Five's got some teeth.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess so.
Okay. Flood damage prevention.
Okay.
What we did.
Let me shift.
So did we do 5, 10, and 15, is that what we agreed to?
Yep.
5, 10, 15, okay. Seven, 5, 10, and 15. Right. Okay.
Seven years, five, 15.
Yes, yes. Okay, this, the state is requiring every municipality to update and re-adopt their flood damage prevention ordinance. They sent a draft proposal in it, included mandatory language, suggested language. There's really only three areas in this that I really wanted to discuss with you. Everything else is just, they added in a few definitions that we didn't have, they rearranged the way they said it, but it was very similar to what we had. If you go to page three, under cumulative substantial improvement, they were recommending at 40%. The average right now with the communities is at 50%, and that's where our existing ordinance is. I, I did a survey, Margate is 50% with a cumulative of seven years, so they're making it shorter timeframe where you would meet that threshold. Ocean City's at 50%, but they're at five years, so they're even shorter. Longport went to 40%. Sea Isle is at 50%, and Avalon is at 50%. I'm recommending 40, as you know, I'm very aggressive with the CRS program. I would say you could go with the 40, staying with the 10 years, or if you were uncomfortable with going, changing it to 40%, I like Margate's at 50% seven, or actually, Ocean City's 50% but fi, within a five-year period. I, I believe, I did ask the CRS representative, and he did say that we would probably get by making these changes up to around 200, 250 additional points with going to the 40%. It will, we were talking about the bulkheads, how can we accelerate trying to get everyone to be in compliance with that? It goes the same way with this, with when they, when you would have to raise your home, if you go to the 40%, more are going to do it. The reality is, unfortunately, construction's not here anymore, the reality is, most of the permits that are coming, they're tearing it down anyway, so you're really not changing what's occurring, we're just going to get the benefit of having it on paper with that.
If you did a 50% and a five years, are you, do you get the same in the CRS rating? Or no?
No, I'll get some more points, but not as much as the 40%.
Forty and.
Forty and five would be.
Forty and, what was it, 40 and how many years?
Ten years.
10, or.
The 10 years is beneficial to us as a borough, because that allows for more, the cumulative effect to take place. So actually, the longer timeframe that we allow for this percentage to build up to exceed 40.
Right, yeah.
Works in our favor.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm fine with 40.
So that's what I was recommending, my, my, the original proposal I had, had the 40 in it, and then I said, "Well, I bet, I guess I should give you that opportunity to do it." If you go to page six, under substantial damage, same thing there, either 40% or 50%. I'm recommending the 40%. You can stay with the 10-year and go to 25% of the market value for each flood event. Then the next area.
Jill, you were saying to the 25%?
Yeah, either 20 or 25%. I would say 25% is fine, that's the majority of the towns are at that. And then the next one is the substantial improvement, I would say go with, I'm asking to go to the 40% on that one.
You're saying just consistently 40?
Consistently, yes. Then I think the next step with this would also be appropriate to take it to the planning board at our next meeting, and just go over it with them, get their recommendation, and then, it has to be adopted by October, so I need to bring it back to the next meeting to introduce it, actually, it has to be adopted in September, I'm sorry. So I would need to bring it back to the next meeting for an introduction to be adopted the following meeting, to be in compliance. And then they can always be, you can always change it, if we see there's things in here that maybe we want to improve on, or we don't like, you can always change it, but you need to have the new ordinance adopted, so.
Questions? Consistently with the 40%? Okay. So you'll bring that forward, Dan, in two weeks?
Yes. That's all I had on it.
Anything else from anyone?
I would like to bring something up under discussion. I'm certain that everyone has noticed the improved state of our Bridge Tenders House, and I'd like to extend thanks to Mark Caravan for being the intermediary between the garden club and the county, and as a result of that, the Bridge Tenders House, which was in great need of repair, has been paint, has been painted a blue-gray color with white trim, and it really looks very, very nice, unless you get really close, and then you see that the ways, the, it needs to be replaced, but it is an improvement.
And the offer was extended, if we provide them with a design, they will consider it and put it in the budgetary process to renovate it. We want to provide them with a different exterior design.
And I think that's a great idea and a wonderful offer. However, they have already provided new signage, and they have mowed and weed-whacked the entire area, and they built window boxes, which the garden club, with the help of Public Works, planted, and the county Public Works waters it every morning, and they also removed the portable potty. So it is looking a whole lot better, and almost anything was going to look a whole lot better, but it really looks a whole lot better, and I think that we should proceed with a thought from council about what we would like to see as the Bridge Tenders House, and submit that to the county, because they were really receptive of any plans that we might want, and it does appear to all drivers as the first thing that they see when they come into Stone Harbor over the bridge, so I think it's to our benefit to improve that as much as we can. So I was hoping that perhaps Jill would draft a letter of acknowledgement to the county, extending our gratitude and my personal gratitude to Mark Caravan.
Okay. Anybody else?
We can get it to look something like the library.
We have a couple of minutes, if anybody has anything else? I'll just, I was going to share this at the beginning of the council meeting, but I'll do it now, and then we'll take a break. I, I got an email from a family that asked if I could meet them on the beach at 89th Street, because they were in their 70th consecutive year of vacationing as a family in Stone Harbor, and they come the same week every year, and they started coming in 1947. So I met them on the beach on Sunday, needless to say, it was very fun, there was close to 90 of them.